Good morning, everyone. Good morning, City of Birmingham. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We're going to have our prayer by Counselor Hoyt and Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor President Parker. And I want everyone to stand, and this is the March 24, 2020, at 9:30 a.m. Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning. If I could share a scripture this morning out of First Peter, beginning with the sixth verse, and it reads, "That in this you greatly rejoice, though now for a little while you may have had to suffer grief and all kinds of trials. These have come so that your faith of a greater worth than gold, which parishes even, though refined by fire, may be proved genuine and may result in praise and glory and honor when Jesus Christ is revealed." And so, God, we call upon you right now as a city, as public officials, as department heads, as persons who are designed to keep us safe, first responders, and those who attend to our streets, our lungs, and all. God, we ask that you protect us. Give us wisdom as leaders of this city. God, I ask a special prayer for our mayor, Lord, and the decisions that he has to make regarding what needs to take place in this city as the leader of this city. I ask a special prayer for our president, President Protem, who would have to make some decisions about what needs to happen that we might protect our citizens to the maximum extent possible. And, Lord, I ask a special prayer for this council, who has to make some decisions about how we administer our duties to our citizens, and we put them first. And, God, we ask a special prayer and blessing upon those who have been succumbed to the coronavirus, God, who are right now fighting for their lives. But, God, we know that you're healer. Your word said there is a bomb in Gilead that can heal a sin-sick soul. And so, God, we ask that you dispatch those healing angels, Lord, to all the places around this world that is affected by this coronavirus. God, we know how important commerce is to this city and to this world. And, God, we ask that you bless us, Lord, and renew us. Give us a renewed strength and renewed mind to say that, Lord, we're gonna adhere to what measures we need to take in order for us to be safe and to take what is being asked of us as citizens, not only of Birmingham but of this world, to say that we're gonna take those measures because we know that it can benefit us greatly down the road. And so, God, we give you praise this morning. God, we beseech you, as only you can do. And, God, we know that you've got the whole world in your hand. And, God, we know that if you, if we are in your hands, that, God, you are in control. For you are the one who can do anything but fail. And so, God, as a city, as elected official, as leaders of this city, we ask, Lord, that you bless Birmingham. And, Lord, and that we will take care of our people and that we would adhere to the mandates of which will come down, continue to come down. And, God, bless the businesses that are open and bless their employees and bless each family under the sound of my voice and even for this city and for this country and for this world. In Jesus' name, I ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, and every single justice.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Good morning.
We could call roll, please.
Counsel President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, here.
Good morning. Councilmember Hilliard.
Good morning, President.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember Smithman. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Abbott. President Parker.
Good morning. Good morning. We're a little spread out here, and so just want to thank everybody for being here this morning. We'll hopefully move swiftly as possible to get through the agenda. And we'll wait. Mr. Mayor. Good morning. How you doing, sir? Morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning to the council and good morning to the public. The last week in the City of Birmingham, but I would say the same thing for any city in this county, for the state, for this country and this world, has not been the same. And we are not out of the clear yet. I think, I want to start with the following to this body. I've shared this with some of you, but I think it's worth stating publicly because we need to take this seriously. Right now, we know many people have already tested positive here in Jefferson County. And Ray, at UAB Hospital, we have many people who have not only tested positive but are in intensive care from testing positive from the COVID-19. In addition to that, they are needing some additional medical help outside of just being sent home. Again, we all need to take this very serious. I think what we are witnessing in this, in this city and county, based on what's happened in other places, I don't think we have the luxury to just sit around and continue to make recommendations to the public. I think we need to move towards enforcement. And I think we need to express to this community that all ages, doesn't matter your age, doesn't matter your generation, we all need to take this seriously. Now, just some backdrop. We know that well over eighty percent of the fatalities of people who tested positive for COVID-19 are over, people over the age of sixty-five. We know here in Birmingham City Limits, twenty-two percent. So, that's a minimum of one-fifth, but that's close to one-fourth of the residents of this city are sixty years age and plus. In addition to that, I don't have to remind anybody in this room that Jefferson County and the state of Alabama always rank forty-eighth or forty-ninth in health issues. And so, the underlying issues that the COVID-19 has a grip on people, which includes diabetes and heart issues and upper respiratory issues and all these other underlying issues. Jefferson County and the City of Birmingham is not only a, postal child would be the wrong term I'm looking for, but we know that our numbers are higher than anywhere else in the state of Alabama. Again, we don't have the luxury to wait. We have to act now. And I would like to present to this body, Mr. President, when this council has completed its business as it relates to what's already on the agenda, to plead as to the agenda for conversation and deliberation on an ordinance to establish a public safety shelter-in-place ordinance that allows this body to engage in enforcing what we need to do to protect the lives of the people in this city. So, that's the brief statement. If you allow me to pause there, and then, once you all are complete with your business, we can take this topic back up. I do want to publicly not only acknowledge all of you, but particularly Counselor John Hilliard, as well as Counselor Hunter Williams, who's Chair of the Public Safety. Both of them have co-championing getting to this point and have been in my ear constantly. And I hope we can have some dialogue and public discussion when you've completed everything else on your agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for the mayor? We'll just kind of go from, we'll go from Mr. Hoyt. We'll just kind of work our way around since everybody's kind of spread out. We'll just work our way from Mr. Hoyt all the way over.
Yeah. Well, and I think we need to take some other measures, but I also think that it would be wise for those of us who have to make decisions to also come up with a plan for us. You know, we don't know where we gotta go as a city. And certainly, if we, oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, and so, but I think, and then, of course, we can discuss it later, but we need to also have some measure in place for counselors. I just think that there needs to be a plan. And because there is, there's a lot of uncertainty, a lot unknown and what have you, and so, it would seem to me it would be prudent for us to devise a plan.
Mr. President, very briefly, I agree with Counselor Hoyt. I failed to acknowledge something that started with a thank you. It's a thank you to this entire body for helping the public understand that we are deemed essential and we have to keep things going. And two, thank you to the employees who are still working every single day. As I've stated, and I think Counselor Hoyt will agree with this, everyone still has an expectation that, that they have to put their trash out on the curb, whatever their trash pickup is, and they expect the City of Birmingham to pick it up. Our citizens still have a fair, realistic expectation that if someone calls 911, there's a dispatcher on the other end to pick up, as well as if they need a police officer to respond to them, as well as if there's a fire or medical issue that the fire truck or paramedic respond. And there are other essential services deemed necessary to keep the city moving as well. So, finding this balance of being essential and protecting ourselves, I couldn't agree more. But we definitely want to take the time to acknowledge the frontline people who are still working every day, making sacrifices. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Hoyt will address that later in the, in the meeting. Counsel, Counselor Hoyt, you're, you're good with that? Okay. All right. Counselor Abbott, we'll just, we'll just go around. You have any questions or any comments? Okay. Counselor Woods, okay. Well, Counselor Smithman. President Protem, okay. Mr. Hilliard, Counselor Hilliard, okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure, just went around. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will go to, the minutes are not ready for December 3, 2019 through March 17, 2020. We'll move to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda starts on page two. We have items two, three, and four on consent. Page three, items five, six, seven, eight, and nine are on consent. Page four, we have items ten and eleven on consent. Skip over to page six, we have items seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty on consent. Page seven, items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are on consent. Page eight, items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are on consent. Page nine, we have items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two on consent. Page ten, items thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six are on consent. Page eleven, items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty are on consent. Page twelve, items forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four are on consent. Page thirteen, item number forty-six is on consent and was recommended by Budget and Finance. Add that information as well. Page fourteen, we have items forty-eight and forty-nine on consent. Same thing for item forty-nine, it was recommended by Budget and Finance. Page fifteen, we have items fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three on consent. Items fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three were also recommended by Budget and Finance. Please note that on item number fifty-three, the amount should change to $2,000 instead of $5,000. That's item fifty-three. Page sixteen, we have items fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six on consent. All were recommended by Budget and Finance. Page seventeen, we have items fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, and sixty-one on consent. Items fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine were recommended by Budget and Finance. Page eighteen, we have items sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, and sixty-six on consent. Have some changes to item number sixty-two, we need to add some information. On the first line after number, a resolution number, we would add twenty-five, eighty-five, dash nineteen, adopted by the council November the nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, fixing a special assessment in the amount of, and you pick back up with the $3,623.84. Page nineteen, we have items sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy on consent. Page twenty, we have items seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six on consent. Page twenty-one, we have items seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty on consent. Page twenty-two, items eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four are on consent. Page twenty-three, items eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, and eighty-eight are on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Anyone, we'll start now. Mr. Hilliard, you're, we'll work our way from, down to the table up. You good with the agenda? Okay. Dr. Quinn. I'm sorry about earlier. I did not recognize you to ask if you had a question for us. So, please forgive me. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'd like to place item fifteen on page five and item forty-five on page thirteen on the consent agenda.
Item fifteen, what was the other one?
Item forty-five on page thirteen.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay. Item forty-five and item fifteen. Yes, sir.
Fifty-nine, there's been a request to withdraw the item from the agenda. It's item fifty-nine on page seventeen.
Okay. That's been withdrawn. Okay. All right. Counselor Hoyt, you good with those two from Dr. Quinn?
Uh, yes, that's fine.
Okay. All right. President Protem? You're good. Counselors, Counselor Woods? Counselor Abbott?
Excuse me. I had some questions, and I had another item to place on consent. Wanted to ask if we might put item forty-seven on consent. Okay. And then, I had a question regarding items seventeen through thirty-nine, all those ADS items. Just wanted to ask if someone could explain, was this a bid? And why are some buildings, some of the items seem to have the same wording except different dollar amounts in the same building? So, can somebody just explain that?
Mr. President, Ms. Abbott, Ms. Melissa Smiley can start explaining it. And then, there are a couple of team members that can give you any more detail and nuance that you need.
Could you ask the question one more time?
Yeah. Item seventeen, thirty-nine are all ADS items for security, and I wanted to know if that was bid out. And then, I also wanted to know, there are a number of items where the wording is the same except there's a different dollar amount, but it's the same facility. And I was wondering why that is. I'm sure there's some reason for it. There's one building where there are three different items in the same building.
So, this was supposed, so this was supposed to go through the Public Safety Committee, and because we did not meet this past week, all of these ADS items were forwarded to the full council. In the state of Alabama, alarm system contracts are typically not bid. Also, these, these are the monitoring contracts for all of the facilities in the City of Birmingham that we have monitored.
Okay. But why are there two and three different items for the same building?
We, we actually checking with legal on that. I do see what you're saying about the same dates, same address, but different amounts. So, we're checking on it. We think that there's an error in some of the dates that are on here, but we're verifying.
Well, and, and the other question, as long as somebody is looking at it, is, you know, like, the dollar amounts are really strange. City Hall costs practically nothing to monitor the entire building, and yet, other buildings.
It, it's, it's not necessarily monitoring a whole building on, in some cases. Some cases, certain areas or certain places where we may be putting swipe cards and so forth. So, it's not necessarily monitoring a whole space in some cases.
You mean City Hall, all of City Hall's not monitored?
We have security here, so we don't.
No. Yes, exactly. I'm just saying, sometimes we will, a department will come in and ask for a specific service for entry into a certain space, but City Hall is monitored through a different company.
Okay.
I'll just add that because we are discussing security, if you want more details about our security, that's something that we might entertain in an executive session if you want more specific details about how City Hall is monitored or other buildings are monitored.
Yeah. And, and that doesn't have to be right now. I was really just trying to make sense of the numbers of items for the same facilities and why, why they're divided up. I mean, is that something that we have to talk about in a private setting?
Well, I, I can't answer your question directly. I'll say that Mike Fleagle is our attorney who actually worked on these, and he put them on the council agenda. I've asked him to come down. We didn't want him to be in the chamber. We're trying to spread out, but he is on his way.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Fleagle, how you doing?
Just fine.
Good. Counselor Abbott has a question or two for you.
Okay. It's regarding the twenty-eight ADS items that are on our agenda. And my question was, some of the questions have been answered, but one of them is, a lot of these, there are two items for the exact same address, same building, but they have different amounts?
Various access points within the same building. And again, these contracts were negotiated with ADS. The, the dollar amounts came from ADS. I did not compute those myself. Again, these contracts are short-term contracts designed to expire at the end of June so that we can draft one master contract for everything. And that contract, I hope, will be bid, even though security contracts are not required to be bid.
Okay. So, if there's more than one access point, we have separate items on the agenda?
Yes, for the same address, yes.
For the same.
And, and especially, I think you'll find for the southern.
Excuse me, Mr. Fleagle, Mr. Mayor, if, if, if I could interject, if it's okay. I, I don't, I, I think if, I, I, is the best way for this Counselor Abbott, if we move for it but ask for it, we can go to executive session and get a more complete understanding of different things.
Well, I think I'm beginning to understand if he can just finish. I think what he's saying is this is temporary and that that's why we're doing these different access points and different items. And next time it comes before us, it will be coordinated by building. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
And then, when that item comes up, we'll have a, we'll have an executive session before the item.
I'm fine with that explanation. I just went through them and couldn't make any sense of it, but now I, I understand.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
We're good. Okay. All right.
And I don't want, and I don't want them taken off consent.
Okay. That's fine. That's fine. That's good. Okay. So, anybody else? We ready on the consent agenda? Counselor Hoyt, you. Okay.
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
Okay. Let me read the tag. "All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing is requested. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced." So, with that, we're ready to vote. Mr. Clerk on the consent agenda.
Counselors Hoyt, Smithman, Abbott.
Aye.
Okay. Counselor Hoyt?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. The consent agenda passes. Ready for the first item, Mr. Clerk?
First item should be item one. Item one, an ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2019-28.
Hold on, Mr. Clerk. Sir, if you could.
It's just.
Yeah, sir, if you could just, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
To change zone district boundaries from MUM to QC2, filed by Bernard C. Bugs, Jr., for owner, owner for the property located at 2416 Carson Road, situated in the northeast quarter of Section 14, Township 16, Range 2 West, in the hearing of office parties. Motion, please.
Okay. Counselor Hoyt, if you will, since that was in, that came when you were,
Item one?
On that, yes, sir, if you'll take item one.
I know I had door rolls.
Yes, sir.
Well, this is a public hearing, and if we have persons, well, I see Ms. Spurles, who would present this item. And then, if we have persons who either want to speak for or against this item, we ask that you line up six feet apart and so that we can hear from you. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kim Spurle. I'm from the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. This item is case ZAC 2019-28. It is in the Echo Highlands neighborhood. It is an application for a change in zone district boundaries from mixed-use medium to QC2 qualified general commercial district, filed by Mr. Bernard Bugs, owner for the property located at 2416 Carson Road. The proposed use is a funeral home with related accessory uses. The current property is vacant and undeveloped. It was formerly used as a gas station. The applicant is proposing to construct a new funeral home. Cornerstone Funeral Services and Cremations will be a 4,275-square-foot building made of metal with brick on the front and sides. The proposed hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. until 6 p.m., and on Saturday and Sunday by appointment only. Cornerstone Funeral Services will arrange services in accordance with the wishes of surviving friends and family. They will process paperwork, permits, and other details associated with a funeral home, including arrangements with the cemetery and providing obituaries to the news media. The home will also have space available to host a visitation service, memorial. The home will also have space available to host a visitation service, memorial service, and funeral service. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as mixed-use low. Therefore, the proposed rezoning request is not consistent with the long-range land use plan. The Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association met at its regularly scheduled meeting on October third, two thousand and nineteen to review the project and voted to not recommend approval of the request. The vote was ten approved and seventeen denied. Should the rezoning request be approved, however, the neighborhood submitted a list of Q conditions. The applicant also attended the November seventh, two thousand and nineteen Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association meeting to provide additional information, but there was no official vote taken at that meeting. Because the property is across the street from the Sun Valley Neighborhood Association, the applicant met with them on August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, and they voted to support the proposed rezoning request. The zoning advisory committee met on October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen and voted to not recommend approval of the request. The Planning and Zoning Committee met at its regularly scheduled meeting on October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen and approved a two-month delay to allow the applicant to go back to the Neighborhood Association. At a special call meeting on December fourth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Committee voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request, including the following Q conditions. And the Q conditions, number one, the following uses are not allowed. A communal living facility, a garage sale or yard sale, a private club, a rummage sale, an opioid replacement therapy treatment facility, an animal boarding facility, animal daycare, automobile parking, automobile sales, automobile service, automobile light truck repair, a bar, an automated car wash, a manual car wash, a donation box, a donation center, a mini storage warehouse, payday loan, recreation equipment sales and service, title loan or pawn shop, all wireless communication uses, manufacturing specialized, warehouse or office, all agricultural uses, all utility uses, a recycling collection center, adult establishment, arena, outdoor amusement, convention center, driving range, freestanding, and a stadium. And once again, those were the uses that are proposed to not be allowed. And that concludes the staff report. Council Hoit.
Well, thank you. Um, is the applicant present? If you would, come and state your name and, um, address for the record, sir.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Bernard Bugs. I am apparatus operator for the city of Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service. And entrepreneur. I come to you to ask you to vote to support the change of this zoning for this property at twenty-four sixteen Carson Road. Little info about the property. The property has been vacant with no structure on it since nineteen ninety-two. It was deemed by the neighborhood associations as a eyesore based upon the cars that they had parked on it and trailers that were parked there and trash being on the property. There is, there is, like I said, there's no structure on the property. And what I've done, I purchased the property back in November of two thousand and eighteen with the intent to build a funeral home on the property. The way that is, the way that it was told to me is that I had to have, um, some structure plans and things of that nature to present to the, to the zoning board before it would be, uh, considered. And I had the architectural plans done. I had surveys. There has been an environmental cleanup on the, uh, property. Geotechnical reports have been done as well. District one does not have a funeral home in the district at all. And I wanted to be that person to come to their community, make some good use of their property by providing that service for some families that's much needed. Cornerstone would produce between eight to ten full and part-time jobs. Some concerns from that neighborhood were a decrease in property value, air quality, and some creeks in the surrounding area. I have provided some information to Councilman Woods on those, on those issues. And I've received emails from the Department of Environmental Management and also some, some information from Jeff's County Health Department. This email I received from, from local gals at the, at ADEM, Department of Environmental Management. Neighbor were concerned with emissions that come from the, uh, from the crematory. I've even heard that mercury and the disease that the person had died would get in the air. Something from the funeral home getting in the creeks, which is absolutely untrue. There's nothing from a funeral home that goes into the ground. The email from Ms. Giles states, emissions from crematory operations may include a very small amount of chemicals. The source of many of these chemicals in the body come from lifetime exposures and are stored in fat and tissue. These chemicals are emitted at extremely low levels and when released into the air, they break down quickly by sunlight or are diluted and carried by the wind. Also crematory units are designed to reach extremely high temperatures during combustion. They contain a burn chamber as well as an afterburner, which would destroy any pathogens or disease during the cremation process. That's from the Department of Environmental Management. Now, they don't give permits for the cremation chambers. They just have to be notified that they do exist. In addition to that, there has been misleading information about this whole project as if it was only a crematory. State of Alabama does not allow a freestanding crematory. You have to have a funeral home and the crematory situation has to be attached to that existing funeral home or the new funeral home that's being built. I listened to the, the tape from the last meeting where we withdrew and we had some people who were still allowed the opportunity to express their opinions on it. I've heard from Mr. Johnson, I've heard having a funeral home in his community is deplorable. I take that as an insult to my profession as an embalmer and a funeral director. At a time when someone needs that service, I'm that person in that district that wants to step up and do that. That's a very difficult place to be. If those of you who have never made funeral arrangements, that's a very difficult place to be. And to have somebody there that can help you through that, I think is paramount. So the word deplorable to me is, is, is very, very disrespectful and insulting. He also made a statement that said that tracking death by cause is not done in Mississippi and Alabama. That is untrue as well. As a funeral director, we put together death certificates. We have to order the death certificate. The cause of death is put on the death certificate for tracking purposes. And it is submitted to the CDC as well to track causes of death in any situation all over the United States. I understand about the framework plan, the northeastern framework plan. The original plan was put in place in two thousand. Mr. Harden spoke on three dates of September the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, January twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, May sixteenth of two thousand and sixteen, as framework implement, implementation involvement days to where, I guess they had a group of people to talk about what they were going to do with the framework of that property, which was three meetings from two thousand and fifteen to now, two thousand and twenty. It's four to five years. And he also stated, they're still working on the plan. He also stated, it's an opportunity area. Being an opportunity area and the property being vacant for over twenty-eight years, they have no plan that's solid put in place for this property. And I asked that, I asked that question to Mr. Harden by phone. I asked him as a leader, what is your specific plan for the area? His answer to me was, we want something in the community that is representative of people in the community. And we wanted something in the community that was, um, see the word he used. I forgot the word they'd use. Mr. and Mrs. Daniels spoke, spoke about the atmosphere and the emissions in the air. They spoke about noise from funeral processions, congestions, and sirens. They spoke that they wanted grocery stores and restaurants in that area. I'm not the person to talk to about that. There's a strip plaza right down the street on Carson Road that used to be the food world. Right now, that, that food world area, the entire area, is housed by Mr. Sarah with car parts. There's a restaurant across the street that used to be a Burger King that has been vacant for at least ten years. There are areas in that strip mall that are outfitted for restaurants and in the strip mall adjacent to my building that are outfitted for restaurants. There's none there. The property that I have, a grocery store would not fit on it and a restaurant probably wouldn't fit on it because of the requirements of parking and the space. So, I'm a licensed funeral director, embalmer, and a crematisers for the state of Alabama and Georgia. State of Alabama made it mandatory in two thousand and eight that crematisers be licensed. You have to go through, uh, some courses to be approved, to take the course, and you have to take a law exam. There are laws in the funeral law that specifically states on cremation. Cremation services in Alabama, section thirty-four dash thirteen, one twenty-six, number six says, cremations is subject to all local, state, federal health, and environmental protection requirements and shall obtain all necessary licenses and permits from the Board, the Alabama Department of Public Health, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the Alabama Department of Environmental Management and other appropriate local, state, or federal agencies. So I'm not planning to try to put any kind of facility in a city that'd hurt anybody. We just recently had the oldest funeral home in the state of Alabama build a brand-new crematory. And there are crematores in this city. It's actually, I think it's five, five or six in this city. So I would hope that y'all would take what I said into consideration and, uh, vote to approve my zoning.
Thank you. If you could just take a seat on the front row. Any other person wish to speak to this item, you may approach today.
Good evening. Let me, good morning. I got it done, uh, council and, and the mayor. My name is Johnny Hawkins. I'm the neighborhood president of Sun Valley Association. I came up.
Speaking to the mic, sir.
I came up one time before when y'all had it on the, on the agenda. And I was speaking on Mr. Bugs', uh, our neighborhood approval. And one of the reasons why our neighborhood is so much involved in this, since I came to be the, the president of Sun Valley in two thousand and twelve, there's been a nuisance on that corner. Tractor trailers been parked there. And the previous owner gave me a document to, to give the city to not have people parked there. And I've always been, been fighting that since two thousand and twelve. And I'm the only one in our community has been doing anything and had documentation on that from the city. And then, uh, you know, I was kind of sad, uh, people trying to block a man, trying to put up a business. He not asking, asking y'all to give me anything. This is a man of law-abiding citizens. And, uh, and I appreciate, really appreciate him because he's a firefighter. And, uh, station eighteen, uh, twenty-eight, he's the, he used to be at that center. And, uh, I know him personally myself. And he had a lot of calls come to my house. My wife was sick. And, uh, she passed away. And I really appreciate our fire department, uh, anybody that know me in our community. I, I raise hell when, uh, y'all do the right things for our, our community and our fire station. And, um, and, and on that, on that point, this, this man, uh, we, y'all took our money, ninety million dollars, and build a football, a football stadium, not for our, not, not asking us about it. And we got paid for it for thirty years. This man asked us for one, excuse my language, one cent, um, excuse me, one cent. Excuse me, one cent. And, and then he tried to block a man from doing a business and taking care of the community. And like he said, in our community, we don't have now a, a funeral home. And then he said, uh, we, we were talking about, it's kind of, I heard it's kind of crazy stuff, stuff going in the air, going in the water. But you know, uh, when that time come for you, time come, each and every one's got to go to a funeral home. You know, you know, and then like you said, uh, our councilman, I'm Mr. Woods. I know your, your grandfather had a menacures pull up to his church. And he got a lot of, and many, many fans. He off, he off waved, waved the funeral home signs on it. And then, uh, Mr. Smithman, in your community, I grew up in Tinsville. And now it's right there. You got two mortuary, uh, funeral guy just, just built, uh,
crematory.
Downport and Harris, just, uh, built last month, a brand-new mortuary system. And then up the street, there's another gentleman, right down the street from, uh, Sixteenth Street Baptist Church, built one that's been there about two years now. And the right house up, up on the corner there has one too. At, at the funeral home, at the funeral home, in that, in that area, we was talking about funeral homes in a five, in a five mile radius, you have six funeral homes in that area. And then it, it was good enough, that's area, and all other, other funeral, funeral home on eighteenth, eighth, Eighth Avenue, uh, right house have a, have a, have a mortuary up there. It was, it's good enough for that. So what I'm saying, uh, this gentleman is a fine young man. And, uh, and our community need that, up and down our, our, that corridor there. And then we got six, we got six, we got six daycare centers. We got four or five places you can go get alcohol at. But you know, you trying to block a man from putting a business up, a black man putting a business up, that's wrong. It's really wrong. And we ought to stop this foolishness, you know, this playing, these, playing these games on us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, councilor, mayor. My name is George Carmichael, uh, with Birmingham Fire and Rescue for twenty-six years. I lost my daughter May thirty-first of last year. After thirty minutes of knowing that my daughter's transitioned, I called Mr. Bugs and contacted him because I wanted him to transition my daughter from life to death. And the job he done for my daughter was excellent. And like he said was, is that it's sixty-seven daycares from Modern Springs Road to Carson Road. Now, we prepare for the beginning of life. We never prepare for the end of life. So, I'm here speaking in behalf of my friend, my coworker. I seen Bernard. I know this guy. He is a harper with his doing. And I pray that y'all entrust him in doing the right thing by allowing him to put this funeral home at that place. I worked at station twenty-eight for several years. I worked twenty-seven for nineteen years. I worked at twenty-nine, twenty, thirty. I worked at all the fire stations in that area. And that area's been like that for twenty-some years. Empty, vacant, and a beautiful funeral home there. And, uh, it'll be a blessing for the community. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, council members. My name is Sharon McCray. I've resided in Echo Highlands at two thousand and twenty-five Ninth Place Northwest for over fifteen years. I'm here in support of Mr. Bugs being approved for the appropriate zoning to build cornerstone funeral home and crematory. Through the years, I've seen the rise and fall of many businesses in my area. Unfortunately, what's left unoccupied with time becomes a place for all things not wanted. In two thousand and sixteen, when my daddy passed, I was solely. In two thousand sixteen, when my daddy passed, I was solely responsible for his arrangements. Everything was stressful and a blur for me. To have had a funeral home in my district would have been a blessing. By reducing the traveling time of the needed trips I made across town for the arrangements, actual funeral, taking the urn I selected and finally going back for his remains due to they had to outsource for his cremation. Then I was able to lay my daddy to rest. Life will make you appreciate what you don't have until you need it. The blessing of having everything prepared in one location close to me may seem insignificant to you until you're, they're your steps that you have to take. Losing my daddy was heartbreaking and changed my life as I knew it. Regardless of how mentally and physically draining it was, I found comfort knowing I did my best for my dad. You always gave me his best. He always gave, he always gave me his best. Cornerstone Funeral Home and Crematory to me is a vital necessity in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ken Johnson. I reside at twenty-one seventeen Seventh Street Northwest, Birmingham, Alabama, three-five-two-one-five. I have made some copies of this report. It came from EPA, but if you guys would like to read, I can pass out concerning the crematorium. Got two pages. Hopefully I had enough to give to everybody. I sent some ahead to some people because I thought I wouldn't be able to speak. So hopefully that is enough. On this matter regarding crematoriums, I understand the necessary need for them. I also understand that when I stated in the earlier meeting that there are two states do not track death by cause. If you went to U A B, if you went to any hospital, they're not tracking the actual death. It's not on there. They may be tracked at the crematorium, but these hospitals don't track it. And for the state of Alabama and Mississippi. When you're reading this, you'll find out that there are reports about crematoriums from the eighteen-seventies all the way to two thousand twenty. The latest information saying that these things carry mercury and that mercury sits on the ground. Goes up into the atmosphere. There are several pathogens that can be released when a body is being burned. It may not be burned up. And it tells exactly what happened. So you don't have to believe me, it's in the report. Also, what I found amusing in some sense, the actual report itself, the EPA for, for Birmingham doesn't have any, any information of the scientific studies. It referred to the back portion of it and said, if you have general, in, general information about the safety and issues of cremations available from the Cremation Association of North America. So whatever you found here had to be small and didn't carry the scientific information about what's happening. This information tells about the stories of what they found, the analytics, the growth of it. But there again, I said it in the last time that I spoke, if you really want to see a product of it, go to your schools that are near these crematoriums. Look at how many kids that are wearing glasses. That's mercury. Look at the benzene. Look at what it's doing to you, the stillborn children. And mercury. All that is in the report. Now, true enough that, that, the actual change, the landscape of that neighborhood has changed. We've got more rental property in, in Sun Valley than we have ownership. We've got more robberies, gunshots every weekend. We got more sex offenders. All those things are changing our neighborhood. The more we fight to resist, the more we fight to actually be better and do things to improve our neighborhood. That's what the Neighborhood Association was for, to have a voice about what we wanted in there. Now, I'm not coming up here about just feelings. And I know why the gas station that was there that was vacant, because it was leaking oil and gas. The tanks had a crack in them, so they just sealed them up. In fact, there were two of them that had cracks in them. Well, they were not being checked, and then when they finally had an issue, they checked them and that's why they closed them down. Now, we do have five creeks that feed into Cohaba. So we have all those things. And we're trying to preserve not just the creeks, because that's our natural drinking water that leads into Cohaba, the, uh, Cohaba River. We're trying to protect our future, our kids. We're trying to protect all those things. Now, my statement still stands concerning about the funeral homes.
Excuse me, can you wrap it up? Will you go, can you wrap it up?
Yes, sir. I just want to hopefully get you guys to look at this and make sure you understand why. Our children, we always say that they are the future, but having our children live next to this, there is no future. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker.
Good morning again, council. Uh, my name is William Harden. I'm the current president of Echo Highlands Neighborhood. Um, what I'd like to do is start off by acknowledging a few things, um, that I can't necessarily disagree with. And one is that, uh, Mr. Bugs mentioned there was not a funeral home crematorium in District One. District One's very large. And we're not disputing that District One doesn't need one. What we're disputing is that Echo Highlands and the residents in Echo Highlands say we don't want it in our neighborhood. And we, you know, we went through that process with Mr. Bugs. The other thing I want to mention is I, I don't know that Mr. Bugs is not going to be a good businessman. But again, it goes back to what the residents in my neighborhood want. I will also mention, Mr. Bugs brought up a conversation that we had, um, one of many. Um, he attended quite a few meetings. I had quite a few conversations with him. Um, one conversation I'll bring up is the last one we had where he essentially tried to say that because I, I don't know, I guess he assumed that because of my age, I wouldn't understand how the funeral home process works. So he asked me, had I been responsible for making arrangements for people in funeral home, for funeral home arrangements? And I actually had been involved with that process with both my grandmother and my grandfather. So we can bring up conversations and I'm more than willing to bring up every single conversation that I had with Mr. Bugs and via the telephone, as well as the conversations I had with him in my neighborhood meetings. We can go back and forth with that all day. But what I would like to do.
I just want to interrupt. If you could just kind of keep everything focused.
I, I, I understand that. That's why I was getting to it, but you allowed him that same courtesy. And I just wanted to correct some things on the record there as it relates to that. So now I'm getting back to the, the facts and the matters that I presented to you all the last time we had this public hearing. And that involved a framework plan. Mr. Bugs mentioned that, yes, those meetings did occur in two thousand fifteen. What Mr. Bugs doesn't know, because he's not a resident of the city of Birmingham, he's not a resident of Echo Highlands, is that we've had continuing meetings about the framework plan even since this exception. As I mentioned before, I was also here for that whole process to make sure that that framework plan got approved. That framework plan was approved and in place before Mr. Bugs made this purchase. Now, we're talking to the proper protocol, the things that you're supposed to do. Well, it's my understanding that if you're going to potentially purchase a property for this purpose, that you would have at least looked into that. Um, we gave Mr. Bugs opportunity to present our neighborhood multiple times. We took a vote on one of those times which you had before you. The key conditions I want to talk to, as I said before, were key conditions that I put in place because at the time, Mr. Bugs didn't even know the difference between the zoning from what he was currently zoned for and what he was asking to be zoned for. So these key conditions are the work of Echo Highlands. They're not the work of Mr. Bugs and I move forward from there. But back to that framework plan, it was also something that was mentioned that essentially that process has stopped. That process hasn't stopped. It's an ongoing process. We're working diligently to get the things done in our framework plan that we passed so long ago. And Mr. Bugs is correct. Um, currently, that corridor doesn't look the way we would like it to look as it relates to what we want in our framework plan. But that doesn't mean we're not working. We, I've had multiple meetings, multiple conversations at City Hall and in the planning department with Mr., with Mr. Jason Hetling about what we would like to see as well as other residents in that framework plan implemented. As you all well know, that process takes time. We've talked about the economic development side of it. We've asked about grocery stores. All that stuff takes time. And as citizens, what we're trying to do is make sure that the things that we want to see in our neighborhood are there. Now, Mr. Bugs Funeral Home and Crematory don't fit into that framework plan. They don't fit into that zoning. I mentioned that before as it relates to that zoning. It was also mentioned as it relates to, um, Sun Valley. They are partnering neighborhood to that, but I, the map's kind of hard to see, but it came from the city. So I'm sure you have access to it. Essentially, that property is in Echo Highlands. I want to make sure that's stated firmly as much as possible. That property is in Echo Highlands. You ask us as residents, ask us as officers to come before you and tell you the things that we need, the things that we want. What we're telling you now, what the residents have told you based on the vote that we took, is that we don't want this. It's not that funeral homes and crematories are a bad thing. It's not that District One may not need one. We're saying we don't need it at that specific location in our neighborhood. I don't know how more succinct that we need to be in order to get that point across. Another issue I would like to raise is this is spot zoning. Some of you have sat on this council and said that you are not for spot zoning. I can understand had this plan been implemented ten, fifteen years ago. This plan just got implemented not two years ago. This zoning just not got done not two years ago. I don't know what it is, it, what it's going to take. And I hope that you will side with the residents and the decisions that they made during that vote as it relates to this specific issue, but this is spot zoning. What that does, okay, say for whatever reason you decide, oh, well, this is not a bad spot zone. That just leads to more spot zoning. You've had many items come before your agenda over the course of year. The last two or three years as it relates to zoning.
So you need to wrap it up?
Yes, sir. What I would like to end with is, again, you ask the residents to participate. You constantly ask us to participate. You ask us to come down here. And for the residents who were not able to come down here because of the issues as it relates to the national global pandemic, you know, they can't express those issues. Some of them may have emailed you, but they can't express those issues. So I'm having to do that on their behalf. And for the residents, the actual residents of Echo Highlands who did come down here, regardless of the side they're on, I appreciate that initiative. But the point is, we're having a public hearing in the middle of a global pandemic about an issue that the residents of Echo Highlands have already told you they don't want. I don't know how much loudly they have to say that. I don't know how much health that they need to risk in order for to get that across. And I honestly ask that if nothing else, you just listen to what the residents have already decided. We met with Mr. Bugs multiple times before even taking this vote so that he would have ample opportunity to present his case. And he did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Uh, any member of council wish to speak? And I don't see the speaker, so that's why.
Yeah, no, I think you have.
Oh, yeah, one more. Okay. Very good.
And I don't see any speakers over here, so we can just.
I'm not sure really how this works. My name is Ken McKimmy. I'm here in Birmingham. I'm not.
Speaking to the mic, sir.
I'm not here to speak about a funeral home, um.
You're not here to speak about a funeral home?
Not about this guy. I'm here to speak on something different.
Okay, then this is the public hearing for the funeral home. Okay. Any member of council wish to speak to this? Okay, Councilor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, before we get into this specific issue, I do want to really share, I, I feel like this should have been, item should have been delayed. And then that day, we are asking in the middle of all the other things that we're considering around safety of the residents of this city, asking people to choose between their own personal health and participating in government. And so I think that that in and of itself was something that we should have, should have taken action on. Um, you know, we look at this, the, the way this issue has matriculated, it came through committee during a special call committee meeting, uh, not giving people the opportunity to come and speak to it. However you feel about it, you should always have an opportunity to speak to these issues. And then we look at where we are today, uh, after that came through committee on a special call meeting. Today where, you know, I, if you want to come, you feel strongly, you want to share one side or the other on this issue, you know, I, it'll be unwise. Like I wouldn't let my, my mother or grandmother come here to speak to this zoning issue. And so before we even get into how you feel about the business or anything like that, I think that, you know, that's an issue. I think that we should, we could have avoided. Kind of looking at Mr. Bugs, I think he, you know, he, he, I will say, he spoke to the neighborhood several times, always willing to answer any questions. You know, I spent a lot of time talking to him, spent a lot of time talking to residents individually, collectively. Um, and he definitely was, was always available to work through that piece. You know, he had the opportunity to come and make his case today. I think he did a good job. You know, but a lot of people did not have that opportunity today to come down and, and share their piece, share how they feel. And I've got a lot of people that feel strongly on both sides of this issue. And I think it, again, wrong of us to move forward with this without allowing the residents to have that opportunity to speak. You know, the neighborhood was against it. They did vote against it. We had a lot of conversations since they voted, you know, all the way up until this point to make sure everybody clearly understood, uh, what Mr. Bugs wanted to do, what that looked like. And make sure they understood what their vote meant. And, and they felt strongly that they did not want this in their neighborhood. They felt strongly. And so, you know, we sit here, we try to really convince, I think I do personally, I think you all do. We all go to our neighborhood meetings and we all try to convince people that they have a voice in what happens here at City Hall. And so I think that, you know, we spend a lot of time doing that. There are times when people are just wrong. But I feel like in this case, people have enough of a, a right to decide what goes into their neighborhood and their, into their community. Uh, when you're talking about long-term planning, when you're talking about framework planning, you're talking about having the opportunity to decide what happens in your community. And this neighborhood is pretty consistently, um, pushed back against that, pushed back against a specific project. You know, I one hundred percent appreciate Mr. Bugs and everything that he's done in this. I did want to come back and ask a question to staff around the specifics around why the Z A C voted against this.
Kim Spurrel, Planning, Engineering and Permits. The Z A C voted to not recommend approval primarily because it was not consistent with the long-range land use plan.
Thank you. Uh, but yeah, I do want to reiterate, this isn't, it's not about Mr. Bugs' ability, uh, as a business owner in his profession. I don't think that is anything that's up for debate. I do think this boils down to what people want in their neighborhood and who has the right to decide that. And so, you know, as we sit here in the middle of a pandemic debating a zoning issue, I think it's important to think that, um, I really personally feel that this should be taken up at a later, later date where people had an opportunity to speak to it. This is not something that we should be debating right now, one. This is not something that we should be debating right now, one. But, you know, I feel like at the end of the day, the neighborhood has to have a reason, has to have the ability to speak and, and decide what happens in the area, and if it is not some major issue or problem, that we shouldn't override that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other member of council wish to speak to this issue?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
You know, I have contemplated this for several weeks. I missed the special call meeting, so I didn't, I didn't vote for this item. My concern, I think that the, the business, the funeral home, is a fine business. The question is, does it belong on this particular piece of property that's zoned mixed-use medium? Now, we went with the same comprehensive plan in Birmingham for fifty years, and we finally got a new comprehensive plan, and the residents had input into the zoning. And I think it's only, you know, parts of it have been completed four or five years ago, but other parts are still ongoing. We haven't even finished the comp plan yet. So, I can't vote for this because it is a spot zone. The property to the north, east, and south of it is zoned to mixed-use medium, and to the west, it's zoned residential. So, we're going to make it full-blown commercial in this location, which I believe is inappropriate, but also, it does not, it's not consistent with the long-range land use plan. To me, that's a big issue when we just got this plan completed. Why would we go against the plan that is, I think this part is, what, two, three years old? So, I cannot vote for this, not because a funeral home isn't needed in District One, but because on this particular piece of property, it's inappropriate, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
I did want to ask another question. I don't know if the administration has people on hand that can answer this, but what has been our investment into developing the framework plans?
In excess of five hundred thousand dollars, wasn't it?
More than that.
Thank you.
And I think those were matching grants. I think it was, the city would put up, I think, twenty percent.
And the planning commission?
And, yeah, and then federal dollars, it was, it was federal dollars, eighty percent, and twenty percent local match, so...
Would you be able to speak to the cumulative, the overall? Thank you.
Um, well, let me, uh, speak. I don't, you know, I've been around a long time, and I don't know when I've heard a community, unless it was a cemetery, was against a funeral. And I don't think necessarily against a funeral, but I've heard admissions, um, um, being considered, and this, to me, seems less intrusive than some of the other stuff that I see in neighborhoods. You know, if I was gonna raise hell, I'll raise hell about the plants that are near that area that continues. I mean, nobody come down to talk about the coal plant or any of these other plants that contribute to our, uh, emissions in, in the state of Alabama. I mean, in, in the city of Birmingham and surrounding areas. And to, you know, to raise a ruckus about a, a funeral home? And, and listen, we need choices. This is a capitalistic society. We know that cremation is less than a funeral, than a casket or whatever, and so, people need choices to be able to choose how they, uh, loved ones, um, leave here, you know? And, um, personally, I don't like the cremation, um, and my mother-in-law was cremated. That was her choice. And I convinced my wife, we still need to have a funeral, but we can still meet her, her desires to be cremated, 'cause I think you need to have closure, for me. That's just me personally. And I'm glad we did that, and she's with us right now in my house, okay? So, um, and if we only have five, and Birmingham is a hundred and forty-eight, uh, point sixty-one square miles, is that, is that really intrusive? I, I don't think so. And I hardly think that the mercury that, um, one of the persons mentioned that's in the ground is, is a result of a crematory. I, I just, I don't, I don't see that. And, and I think the process of, and maybe we need to spend some time on the process of, of a crematory and what that entails, because I know where, there's one right there by the club on, uh, on, um, Graymont Avenue, right behind the place, I can't think the name of the place, uh, there. And every night, I saw this smokestack, and I said, "Well, what's going on there?" And they said, "Well, they, it's a crematory." But I didn't know it was there. And most of them you don't know that are there. And generally, generally now, they only do it at night, most of them. I've never seen them done in the daytime. So, that means you have less people to be impacted by that than you would if, you know, you were doing it during the day and what have, when people moving around and what have you. And then, we also know that that's a natural buffer, uh, for some of the, um, pollutants that, that, that find its way into the atmosphere, and we have trees and what have you. Now, I'm not sure how close, uh, a creek or a little, uh, waterway or whatever is close to this place. I'm not sure. I don't know the distance there. But, um, crematories, funeral homes are held to an ethic. There are people who have gone to jail for a long time for not following the rules. And the fact that they are becoming more popular, uh, they are even more strenuous in terms of rules than it has been previously. And so, um, I just, I really don't see, and, and let me say this too, about the framework plan and the comprehensive plan, because, you know, I, I was there when we started, and, um, and certainly, um, the comprehensive plan doesn't cover everything. It, and I'm almost sure it did not consider, uh, a crematory when it was, when it was thought of. We didn't, 'cause you can't think of every business to try to come up with rules to, to stop certain things from coming. I, I just, I don't know if you could do that. Um, and, and I know it, it, we can't cover everything. And I don't see a crematory. And then, we have iterations of them in other parts of the city already. Now, we're a city of two tails? Well, you know, I'm the chairman.
I'm?
Okay, so chairman got, need to have some time. I'm waiting, I'm waiting on everybody else. So, but anyway, I'm done, um, and I, I know exactly, uh, what I'm gonna do, because I, I just, you know, um, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Bugs for wanting to provide this kind of service, uh, to our citizens. He's been an outstanding citizen in this city. We, we can't, we got a lot of, we got some bad business folk, but he's not one of them. And I think we ought to support him. Um, imagine, uh, this is his life savings. Uh, he's been a fireman, and, uh, he's very, um, entrepreneur, and, uh, and I think we need to support entrepreneurs, and particularly minority entrepreneurs, you know? And, and he didn't just come up with this idea, he probably did some research, which basically shared with us at some point in those committees, that he had done his research, and he understood what was needed for that area. So, um, I'm gonna vote in the affirmative that we provide this for him. And let me say this too, if people, I've been a neighborhood officer, and I have, um, always engaged myself in issues that I thought were important, and I find my way to the council, I'm just here to tell you, I would. And when I've been the only person to come for my neighborhood, uh, Ms. Valerie Abbott hurried me, okay? 'Cause you own this council, you're the only person that was on this council, when I came to the council, uh, as a neighborhood person. So, I'm just here to tell you, um, you don't have to have a lot of folk to raise issues, but they've raised them quite well, and I respect each person's, uh, contribution, but I just don't think that, um, we would, we would be, uh, right to deny this young man an opportunity to bring a business to a community, and it's been blighted. I wish you would over there, could come over there on, uh, Avenue I and Forty-first Street, where I've been trying to get the trucks from stop parking. I mean, I got some picture I'm gonna share with the council in a little bit, but these trucks, they just park there, and, and, and it's a, it's, and that has more of a negative impact on the community than, than, than anything else. Property value goes down, 'cause when they going through doing those comps and they see all this mess around, I just sent the mayor something last week. Sent pictures, but I'm gonna send it to you all. This is what we have to do, and when you have vacant property like that, that's what happens. People think, people don't care, what have you, but if you had a funeral home there, and based on the, uh, um, this schematic here, I mean, come on, it would be a benefit, and I think he'd be a good, uh, a good friendly business in that community. So, that's all I have to say. Mr. President, unless anybody else needs something to say, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Mr. President. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes.
Just wanted to say one other thing. This is not about whether Mr. Bugs is a fine person or not. He is a fine man. His business is a fine business. The question before us is, does that business belong on this particular piece of property in the Echo Highlands neighborhood? So, it has nothing to do with how, how, I mean, I wanna be cremated. So, you know, I'm for cremation. I don't have a problem with it, whether it belongs in this neighborhood, in this location. And just think about it for a minute. If you were being thorough, would you not check into the zoning on the property before you bought it and find out whether what you wanted to do was allowed on that piece of property? So, we're considering today rezoning the property for this particular use. It's not whether the use is good, and it's not whether the owner is a fine person, it's whether this piece of property should be rezoned for this particular business. That's what's before us, not the wonderfulness of, of funeral homes or whether one's needed in District One.
And Madam President, if we were consistent and paying with that brush, uh, in this city, but I'm here to tell you, uh, there are zoning changes that takes place on this agenda every single week, every single week, notwithstanding what is about to take place, uh, even for, um, uh, for the Caraway property. In any of those, uh, there's a zoning change. It's a residential area, but they want to can do a mix, what's the name? Now, initially, I wasn't for it, but after Parker beat me over the head, I was, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, no, I'm just kidding. But I'm just saying, we deal with zoning changes every day. That's what we do. And as a committee, you deal with it all the time. And so, this is nothing that's not new, and listen, and, and a lot of these places already have their zoning, their comprehensive plan been completed. There's stuff that happened in, in my district. You know, I got a, I got a, I got buildings turned to the, to the main theraphag, 'cause somebody didn't, didn't, didn't do what they needed to do. And I'm, I'm, I'm still a little teed off about that, okay? And, uh, and even, uh, in, over there, and, and, um, I guess District, uh, Gil District, Mr. Hunter out there, I suspect, uh, councillor, um, the wall mark out there, same scenario. They got the back of the building turned to the main theraphag, okay? I raised issues then, okay? So, but, but I just think, um, in the Shakespeare vernacular, that this is much as do about
Mr., uh...
I'm, I'm, yeah, are you, need to speak? I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Right, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I do want to, one, just make sure that we're careful to not to devalue anybody's contributions. Like I said, we do appreciate residents come in to be heard. Um, we need more people to participate in the process. You know, even in the, the different zoning changes that we've mentioned, they've all had to go and get the neighborhood's support, whether it's the stadium, whether it's Caraway. Uh, they have to go to the neighborhood, and they have to get the neighborhood on board. They've had to make changes and adjustments, uh, to, for people to be comfortable with what we're putting in their community. And so, at the end of the day, all we're talking about is, do residents get a voice in what happens in their neighborhood or not? And so, that's, that's all, I mean, that's, you know, that's what we're talking about today, and, uh, we can move forward, 'cause we do need to get to, um, more important business today.
Absolutely.
And we should not have taken this up today, uh, in the first place.
Mr. President, over to your hand, sir.
Okay.
Oh, you had something, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Mr. President. Your colleague, Councilor Woods, had a question I thought was important to answer before we closed this subject out, was, which was, it's more detailed in the framework plan around cost and investment. And the total cost of all nine framework plans, um, is about two-point-six million dollars. Uh, this cost is covered by eighty percent of a federal grant, so they left the city's portion to date of about five-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Um, the cost of the framework plan for the area under consideration today is two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, with the city's share being fifty-eight thousand dollars, fifty-eight thousand, four-hundred dollars.
Thank you so much. Uh, I thought my number was right. So, go ahead, Mr. President.
Did you have a follow-up? Counselor says that was a response to your...
Right, yeah, I was just looking at the overall cost of...
But a lot of that was federal, it was an eighty-twenty match, which is pretty typical, um...
Right.
...that we do, that a lot of cities will, is, the hard thing is competing for the federal dollars and the city putting a match on it. So, anyway, um, is that everything, or you got some else? Okay, all right, anybody else, uh, is that... All right, Mr. Clerk? Uh, is there a motion? Uh, we've got a motion up. Mr. Clerk, we're ready to go, ready to vote. I don't know, we're voting. I don't know if y'all, you got your machines?
Hilliard?
Aye.
El Quinn? Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
And Councilmember Williams?
No.
All right, that vote should be up.
Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item?
Uh, looks like it goes to twelve, item twelve, I guess thirteen and fourteen as well.
If you'll call them, uh, all up at the same time.
On page four, a resolution authorized the mayor to execute a construction right-of-way agreement between the city of Birmingham and Lamar Outdoor Advertising, wherein the city would permit Lamar to enter up onto nineteen-thirty-eighth Avenue North for the purpose of raising the sign frame located on the back of the Bowwell Auditorium. All costs incurred as a result of this agreement will be the responsibility of Lamar with no expenditure from the city. Item thirteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a construction right-of-way agreement between the city of Birmingham and Lamar Outdoor Advertising, wherein the city would permit Lamar to enter onto eighteen-oh-one-seventeenth Street North for the purpose of cutting down and removal of a tree located on the property. All costs incurred. As a result of this agreement, will be on the responsibility of Lamar with no expenditure from the city. And fourteen, a resolution authorized the mayor to execute a construction right-of-way agreement between the city of Birmingham and Lamar Outdoor Advertising, wherein the city would permit Lamar to cut down a tree located at eighteen-oh-one-seventeenth Street North, which, due to the new ramp construction, obscured the view of one of its existing outdoor signs. In return for the removal of the reference tree, Lamar, it is... In return for the removal of the reference tree, Lamar, at his expense, will raise the sign frame attached to the back of the Bowwell Auditorium, which due to the new ramp is currently totally obscured. All costs incurred as a result of this agreement will be the responsibility of Lamar, with no expenditure from the city.
All right, um, we have a motion.
So I move.
All right, I'll, I'll second. All right, the items before us, I'm gonna ask for a two-week delay.
Second.
All right, ready to vote in a two-week delay.
One second.
All right.
Councillor Member Alexander.
Uh, yes, for me.
Aye.
Is Hilliard out? I'm sorry.
Yeah, he did.
Please help.
Okay. Councilmember Smithman?
Yes.
You said yes, okay. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, all right, two-week delay. Uh, item passed with two-week delay. Next item, sir.
Let's see.
Sixteen, it's on the same page as items thirteen and fourteen. In ordinance, uh, to further, I'm sorry, authorize the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of three thousand thirty-three dollars and seven cents to execute a quick claim deed to three DNT, uh, let's see, for the sale of property located at eleven twenty-six Fourteenth Street North, Birmingham, which was acquired by the City upon foreclosure of municipal improvement lease, according with sections three, that's one, that's four C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. And this is the first reading, and I need you to see if you want to pass it today. Item in permanent operation.
I move for universal.
Certainly.
Universal consent, not universal. Unanimous, unanimous consent. I knew something was wrong with that.
All in favor, let it be known by saying, uh... Derivative.
Aye.
All opposed, all emotions on the item. It's a derivative. All right, the item is before you.
All right, we're ready.
All right, voting should be open.
It's yes for me.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Same response.
All right, the, uh, oh, all right, that item passes. All right, next item.
All right, we should be going to item number forty-seven, I think. Yes. Item forty-seven. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an emergency loan fund administration agreement with Birmingham Business Center, under which the City of Birmingham, as part of its response to the detrimental impact of COVID-nineteen pandemic, will make up to two hundred thousand dollars available to BBRC. And BBRC will provide outreach and education and financial support for businesses in the city with less than fifty employees and would administer financial assistance, including loans of up to twenty-five thousand dollars each, to approve small businesses for a term of up to one hundred and eighty days.
Motion, please.
I move approval, second.
Let me just ask a point of information, uh, and we can, on forty-five, we had that on consent, Mr. Clerk. I just wanted to... I don't, I think Councillor Quinn asked to be added, and I don't think Councillor Hoyt objected to that.
Forty-five was added to consent and approved by budget and finance.
Yeah, I, yeah, I didn't think, uh, Councillor Quinn made the request. And when we circled around, Councillor Hoyt said he didn't have a, an issue with it.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
On this one, I just have one question.
On which one, forty-five or...
Forty-five, uh, no, forty-seven.
Okay, okay, okay.
We're on forty-seven, right.
Yes, sir, but I was just asking, cause it was asked, that we skipped one, and I was just asking for clarity.
So, on forty-seven, this is the two hundred thousand dollars that's coming from the, uh, innovation and, yeah, EIO, anyway. So, it's coming from your department's budget, correct, Mr. Carpenter, Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that that was what this two hundred thousand was for, so thank you.
Okay, and let me kind of, uh, kind of lay out where we are before we go into this presentation. Kind of let, set up tomorrow, uh, we will have a special call council meeting to consider the second portion, remember we talked about last week, it's one point two million. And that would be to consider, uh, the one million dollar appropriation, uh, that due to advertising, um, tomorrow would be required for the council to have a special meeting. Um, we mentioned a little bit of that last week, but I know there was a lot of traffic last week. But, uh, I just wanted to kind of clarify, it's, it'll be two hundred thousand being considered today out of the, a departmental budget of Dr. Carpenter's. And tomorrow, uh, there'll be another item for the million dollar appropriation. So, um, so I want to make sure I got that laid out, pretty much the framework of everything.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Okay, all right, so we'll have to do it again tomorrow. Um, and I guess we'll get the same documents for the appropriation tomorrow. We'll get those later today, or...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I've never heard of a special called city council meeting. Should we not recess this one and just continue it tomorrow?
You want to speak to that or you want me?
Councillor, you have authority to have a special called meeting. Um, what we're doing tomorrow is not an appropriation, I just want clarity. The appropriation was done last week, when all the money was, um, set aside for this. But in order to comply with Amendment seven-seven-two, we had to give seven days' notice of the action that was gonna be taken. So, there have been two different notices published. There was a notice published for you to provide two hundred thousand dollars to BBRC, and that's to be considered today. And then a subsequent notice was published last Wednesday, um, of permitting you to consider tomorrow the additional one million.
Okay. I just didn't remember us ever having a special called council meeting. And that was my only question, was should we recess and just continue our meeting tomorrow like we continued last, last meeting?
We just took a long lunch break, that's all.
Yeah, we just took a really long lunch break.
But, but we did mention that last week, but it was a lot moving. But we did lay out that it, we would possibly need two different meetings.
That's my only question.
Okay. I just want to let everybody know is, if you're just looking, it's, we gotta replay it again tomorrow.
And that would be in place of the committee of the whole meeting, or...
Uh, the committee of the whole was just put out there just in case there was something, if we needed to consider anything dealing with what we're going through with the coronavirus, any, any, any item. We just kind of, we'll probably cancel it.
What time would this special called meeting be?
At nine-thirty in the morning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, we, just like yesterday, we just kind of put it out there just in case we needed, there was an item or items that we needed to, uh, consider. We just would have that as a, as a scheduled meeting. And, and of course, we, we will be, uh, canceling it, uh, later today, but just had it as, just in case. So, anyway, everybody's, we're good now? Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to kind of clear all that before you got into your presentation. Okay, well, I was gonna let them make a brief presentation. I just want to kind of lay out the groundwork of, you're just looking at two hundred thousand, there might be a mention of a one point two, and just kind of want to lay the groundwork for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'll be brief. Dr. Carpenter will be brief. I think he wants you all to turn your attention and your packet to these two pages you see that I'm holding up right now. Two is that I want to thank you for moving with a sense of urgency to support small businesses within the city. Uh, there are a lot of other cities in America that are paying attention to what you all are about to do today. So, thank you for your leadership and support in this of our small business owners and these hourly workers that work there. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the two slides you have, excuse me, the two slides you have in front of you are breaking down a survey that we have obtained through small businesses on behamstrong.com. So, six hundred-plus surveys have written in to us to let us know the types of troubles they are facing as a result of COVID-nineteen. Sixty-eight percent of those respondents are either minority or women-owned or otherwise disadvantaged, disadvantaged business enterprises. About half of them experienced, over the last fourteen days alone, a fifty percent in revenue loss. And that number as an estimate is sixty to, or fifty to ninety thousand dollars. The bottom line is that most of these companies, a vast majority, are anticipating laying off their workforce at pretty high rates, so twenty percent. And, um, it would be my professional opinion in this role, but also my academic opinion, that twenty percent of our overall workforce is exposed, which we have about sixty-six thousand workers. The map that you see here, um, shows the zip codes that have been affected. We didn't get address level data, but we did get zip code level data. And so, those dots represent where businesses are, uh, in distress. So, the loan consideration you have in front of you today, first is two hundred thousand dollars from our, our budget. And then tomorrow would be the one million dollar, dollars that you appropriated last week to inject funding into small businesses. Some of you have asked a, a bunch of different questions that we've tried to take into account, including, how would people be judged, what will be, what will the application look like? All of that is now online. Uh, I believe the mayor also sent you all the loan rubric last night that will be used to directly evaluate businesses. The goals here are pretty simple. Number one is to stabilize small businesses that are struggling. Number two is to bridge small businesses into either a more stable economic cycle or other sources of capital like SBA. I'm happy to answer questions, as is, uh, Bob Dickerson. I'm happy to report that as of this morning, we have nine hundred thousand dollars already committed to match the city's one point two. And, uh, we have several other outstanding asks that we expect will result in more funding. So, we've been able to basically tap what you all are contemplating here today in the private sector. And that's more than what I've seen in other cities. And I think it speaks to the opportunity for us to act in public-private partnership to support the businesses that mean so much to all of us. So, I'm happy to answer questions, but also appreciate the urgency with which you all have acted and the flexibility you've demonstrated in your processes to act so quickly.
Um, I'm gonna start. Mr. Hilliard, you want to, you want to start down there? Dr. Quinn, or you want to go? Okay, Dr. Quinn, you want to start, and then we'll just kind of go around.
Have the speakers request to speak.
Um, no, but I, I see, but I just want to, we'll go around. We'll just kind of go around and we'll come, everybody's gonna speak. I just know we've been going from left to right. President Pro Tem, everybody. Councillor Hoyt, go ahead, I think you're the only one.
Well, thank you.
And then I'll make some, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, um... Mr. President, I, I wanted us to consider, uh, un- unless we can define small businesses. You know, we talked about nonprofits, um, being in this mix too, because they provide jobs and opportunity, uh, like United Way and other places that they may have to consider. I'm not sure, cause I don't know their, um, um, you know, what they're doing in, in light of what, what we are trying to do. Now, I do know, according to some stuff I read yesterday, Congress, the reason why they hadn't passed a stimulus package for Congress is because, uh, the Democrats want them to put into that nonprofits. And I think we'd be derelict if we didn't also include that. Now, if you have, just speak to it. But it doesn't spell it out in the, in the document. It says small businesses. And so, um, if you could speak to that, uh, that would be very helpful.
Uh, what we're doing is, is attempting to start something to prevent these businesses that are dependent on not having any cash flow, uh, within fourteen days. We're already on the eighth day. And that is for, for-profit small businesses within the city limits of Birmingham, who have fifty employees or less. It is unfortunate that this fund cannot serve all, um, but we have to start somewhere.
Well, there are a lot of nonprofits that employ folk that need to be considered. What's wrong with considering them if they make application? And they can, uh, by the same criteria in other small businesses, because nonprofits are small businesses as well. And, um, and to be prejudiced, um, towards nonprofits or not to consider them, I think it's, it's derelict on our behalf, because, uh, there are a lot of folks who work, um, for these nonprofit organizations. So, um, you got the House of Authority. I mean, you got any number of these organizations, what have you. And I don't understand if we're a city, um, that embraces, uh, small businesses, why we're not considering it. I just, I don't think we do another round of million and we not consider this. And, Mr. President, we talked about, um, the board. That is not in this document that we have. And that needs to be dealt with. Uh, and I thought that's what we said last week, but obviously, what we said is, is, is not inclusive in this document. Now, uh, I'm for, I think this is a great idea to help stimulate the economy, but we don't want to leave folk out. And then, and then we don't want to not, uh, ensure that it's gonna be done in a, um, in a comprehensive way. I have every, you know, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, none of this stuff that we said last week is considered here. And I thought we all agreed, even those who said they're gonna support this, agreed that we needed to include nonprofits and we needed to also, um, understand the dynamics of the board that would have the responsibility, have to, uh, um, they, they evaluate these, uh, businesses, what have you. And then there needs to be a reporting, a monthly reporting of who benefited from these loans. That's not too much, that's...
No, let me kind of go down the list. Um, I think between today and tomorrow, um, I think we should be able to flush out a lot of the questions or issues that were, uh, discussed last week. Now that we have a document in front of us, we can use this as a working document, um, between today and tomorrow, cause we have to, uh, consider another portion of the, uh, appropriation, which is the larger piece on tomorrow. So, um, I think between now and tomorrow, uh, I think we'll be able to, um, have a game plan as relates to the makeup of the, of the loan advisory committee, uh, as relates to several other matters. Uh, they go a little deeper as relates to, you know, after this fund or after everyone pays the, the money back, what's next? And I think that's where we want to be able to help. And that's a conversation that, that we need to engage on. Uh, and so, um, I think over the next two days, we'll be able to flush out a lot of that. As relates to the nonprofits, uh, that's another matter that I think, uh, we've got to work a little bit, uh, deeper on. And so, but I think what we want to do is to make sure between now and tomorrow, we find common ground. So, it's balanced between, uh, making sure that the council, um, has input and receives the reporting process. And I think we can get there between today and tomorrow. Uh, this is a, a two-step process, and, uh, Councillor Hoyt, I think we'll be able to get there.
That's fine, I, you know, um, you know, our job is fiduciary. And we have, we have that responsibility. That's, that's not, um, the mayor's responsibility, that's our responsibility. And I don't think we negate that. I think we, um, make sure that we maximize whatever efforts we do to touch as many businesses and people, um, um, in this community.
Yeah, even also, uh, on how to make sure, even though a lot of people have been going to the website and, and hearing about Birmingham Strong, but then there are some businesses, uh, that necessarily are not so tech savvy. So, what can we do to utilize all the tools within the toolbox of communicating with, with these other small businesses? So, that's something that we'll develop between, uh, and try to have a, a game plan and a strategy around that, uh, as we move forward over the, over today and tomorrow. Councillor? Councillor Hoyt?
Yes, okay.
Okay, all right, so, Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, last week and, um, I think it was last week, everything's been such a blur. Uh, our finance director, Lester Smith, uh, gave us an estimate of roughly a twenty percent reduction in revenue to the city of Birmingham, both in payroll and sales taxes. Um, I, while the presentation was very thorough and well thought out, I, I disagree with the presentation in, in, in one regard, is I think that there's going to be a lot more, uh, than a twenty percent decline in revenue to the city of Birmingham. Our small businesses under fifty employees, for, for the most part, uh, bring in a large portion of our payroll and sales taxes, which are two of our main revenue sources, um, in the city of Birmingham. We are a body that approves the finances of this city. I think that we need to be cognizant of what's going to be happening, uh, both in the world and it, but also in the state and in this city in terms of revenue coming in to the city of Birmingham. Whatever we can do to provide a lifeline to our small businesses, um, I think is a very wise choice. I also think that the success of this program, uh, is exemplified by the fact that Dr. Carpenter and his team have already been able to raise nearly one million dollars in private funding in a week's time. I've served on a lot of boards and done a lot of fundraising for nonprofits, and I assure you that raising a million dollars in seven days is, is a very hard task to do. And I think that speaks volume to where the city is, where the heart of the city is, um, and the, the future success of this program. I think that Mr. Dickerson, um, is, uh, is, is the poster child for somebody that we, as the city, would want to, to lead this program. This program has been well thought out, well put together, and it provides an essential lifeline to our revenue sources, to our, for the city of Birmingham, which we have estimated a twenty percent decline, which I can almost bet all of y'all it's gonna be a lot more than that, maybe even double that. So thank you guys for putting it together, but I also want us, um, in a very capitalistic way, to be cognizant that our revenues are about to significantly decline, and we need to support our revenue generators, which are these small businesses with fifty, under fifty employees. Thank you.
Okay, and we're gonna keep on around. And one other thing, Counselor Hoyt, I forgot. Even with the new, with the SBA and, and, and the money that's coming through the federal government, we need to figure out how do we, those small businesses are able to, to take part in that. So I think this is the beginning of a larger conversation, understanding when the payback comes back in six months, understanding that this, this is gonna be a eighteen to twenty-four month process. So that's what I was saying. Phase one is the, let's deal with the, with the, with the employees and right now, but understand that once that mu-
I support it, but I think.
But it needs to be spelled out.
It needs to be spelled out.
And we're gonna be working through that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, collectively, all of us together. Because once all the money is paid back, then how do we then go into a phase two to support, uh, these small businesses on an ongoing basis? Because it's gonna have a ripple effect, uh, not just for the next six months, for, for the next eighteen to twenty-four months. And I think we're realistic about that. So that's a conversation, Mr. Mayor and Dr. Carpenter and Mr. Dickerson and the council. We've got to explore and work together on. So with that, President Pro Tem, Counsel Smith, everybody?
Yes, thank you. Anyway, I just wanted to, um, add, I know both Counselors Hoyt and Williams have made some very good observations and statements about what we are trying to do here today. I just wanted to, um, reiterate on the, um, consideration for the nonprofits. I did work for a nonprofit for nineteen years, a, um, national nonprofit. And I know that most nonprofits, they do depend on public donations. And they also, um, as we consider this, we know this is a very fast-moving target in trying to help and support our businesses, keep people at work. I have friends that are affected. A young man has a, a wife and three children, and he, he no longer has a job. So we want to try to get that small business owner back in business so that this young man can, uh, you know, support his family. So what I'm asking is that we just stay, um, on target with looking at this as maybe a one, two-pronged approach and that, uh, we consider what's before us today, but the issues that I agree with you, the issues that we're talking about, being equitable, um, being fair, ensuring that this reaches across the city into the businesses, um, that a lot of us depend on. But we need to be mindful. Yesterday, we just saw in the paper, two well-established businesses announced that they were closing. Now, whether this was a direct impact on the COVID-nineteen and how we're trying to flatten that curve, those businesses may have been in trouble already, but we just wanna be sure that for our small businesses, we are providing. And I'm gonna go back and piggyback on, um, uh, who we've selected here to help to guide us through this. I wanna thank the mayor and the IO, but I also wanna thank Mr. Dickerson. Just going to Washington DC, seeing the work and, um, the establishments and work he does throughout the nation with the NRCRC and just your experience here, I feel that we have a very good, um, captain that will, you know, get us through this. But I just ask that as a council, we look at the issues that before us today. We have the opportunity tomorrow to expand on the conversation and the concerns that I think some of us also share with, um, you, Mr. Hoyt. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Alright, Counsel Smith, I'm sorry, skip you. You'll go back and then.
Um, I just wanna kinda echo what Counsel Williams said. You know, this is very important. I just found out two of my favorite restaurants just closed permanently, and it's, it saddened me a lot. Uh, two of them are mild end. I don't know if you guys have noticed that by Railroad Park, a beautiful restaurant is gone. Um, Brio's, even those on the outskirts of Birmingham, is gone as well. So that, um, really saddens me, and I do want you all to know as a council that there are people, residents in Birmingham, who are supporting Birmingham Strong. So I know Rutterack Club, I'm a member of there. They actually have a Rutterack Foundation, and they actually, well, obviously I'm not doubting, but they're, um, actually trying to match funds for this as well. So, you know, I think everybody's pitching in. Um, and I think this just says to the heart of the city, there's also a link that people have where you can actually cash out workers' tips in order to help them. Um, I do think, like I said last week, and what Counsel Hoyt and President Pro Tem, Wardney Alexander said, nonprofits, we need to do something for that. There may be a discussion for a later date, maybe something we can just talk about, brainstorm, but it's very important that we consider that. Um, I just want the public to know that the city government, the ten of us, we really do care about you all. Uh, we want you to know that we're gonna try to do it within our best abilities to help you all. So I really support this. Hopefully, we can come to consensus. I really just wanna pledge to my other nine colleagues that we come together despite our differences and opinions to help the citizens, because this is not a time for us to be fighting. This is a time for us to be on one accord, because it's not about us. It's about what our theme is, which is putting people first. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Counselor Hillyard?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I am, uh, more than excited to see that, uh, we're working together as a team and we're working through the issues that we need to work through. Uh, it's exciting when you see the, uh, the mayor's office and the council and all the administrative, uh, on both sides working to, to face such a, a pandemic issue going on now in our business community. I have received calls from several, uh, businesses, from, uh, from hair, uh, hair distribution companies. One gentleman, you know, of course, you know, the businesses have closed, so he's already suffering from that. A restaurant owner, a small restaurant owner, a, a, a young African-American male, hi- his business is suffering. Uh, uh, you know, a barber shop owner, business is suffering. So we're, we're about to take on something. And I already started giving them, uh, the website, even though it may not be, you know, and they may not be full of active. I've been giving it out on a regular basis. Uh, this will impact all of us. So, uh, I'm excited to the point where we are really looking at and working through it. Through all the stuff that's going on, we have constantly been communicating, and that, that's another thing. I wanna thank, uh, uh, my, my president counselor, uh, Parker and President Parker. You are doing an excellent job of communicating with us, and I, I'm, I'm proud of the way you're leading this council and what we're dealing with. And I, you know, I, I know you don't like a lot of accolades, but, you know, I've known you for a long time, and I like to, I like to tell people while they're living, give them their flowers while they're alive. Tell, tell them what's what. So continue the good work and the communication that we're doing, and we're headed in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I see in, uh, the Scope of Services, uh, number eight, it says that, um, there are monthly semi-annual, annual reports required.
This is in the back. Everybody, no, this is in the, Dr. Quinn, you wanna reference the item on the agenda, not the fly?
Yeah, so this is page seven hundred and ninety-one of our packet. Scope of Services, uh, number eight, um, basically says that BBRC is going to re, uh, be preparing required reports, um, which includes monthly semi-annual, annual reports based on the city's fiscal year. Um, each report is due to the city no later than thirty days following the end of the reporting period. Even though this type of terminology is often in the agreements that, uh, come through the, the council for approval, we all, we don't necessarily see those reports. So I just make a request, uh, to the mayor's office that we get visibility on those reports.
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, the other question that I had, and this is slightly off-topic, but, uh, I wanted to ask about the Resilient Worker Fund that's been established. We're hearing about the Emergency Loan Relief Fund, um, but haven't heard any update on the Resilient Worker Fund and how the fundraising for that is going.
So the truth is, um, over the last seven days, what we've had to do with your blessing and your vote is make sure we hash this out, um, to get the support from this body on the first phase. We get through today, uh, it puts us in a position to start working on that with more energy. We do believe resources for that will be matched as well. Uh, there are some available funds in IEO, um, that we believe with a little less than a hundred days remaining in the current fiscal year, we need to shift towards this additional fund to engage, how do we support our hourly workers? Um, we need to have continued conversation with legal to make sure, uh, everything we're doing, um, is allowed by state law. And then we can, that gives us more time to be creative, which includes not only, um, funds from IEO, but matching funds or probably more funds from the private sector as well, very similar to this current fund that's before you to vote on.
And then one final question, um, just because business owners, I've, I've actually heard from more business owners in this past ten to fourteen days than I have in the last two and a half years. So, um, but a couple of folks have reached out to me and, uh, asked specifically about potential tax abatements from the city. I don't have any position on that issue at the moment, but I, I wanted to ask the question because business owners are asking us as council members.
Great topic. I continue to be in constant contact, um, with the finance department, uh, with IEO on creating this current Bham Strong Fund and what we're doing in a position to offer relief in the form of no-interest loans over the next six months. What do you do if you throw in the mix of some type of tax rebate? Preliminary information says that wouldn't be good for, um, what we're attempting to do that's before you. It would pretty much offset everything we're attempting to do. So we need to have some more discussions. If Lester Smith was here, he would tell me that's a, uh, not necessarily premature conversation, but an ongoing conversation where by numbers, that doesn't look like there's a win-win for the small business owner and the city of Birmingham today.
You finished? Dr. Quinn, you're good. Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, well, let me, because I want us to understand the significance of nonprofits. With this crisis, there's gonna be more drug use, more alcohol abuse. I mean, just, and if you don't, if you leave nonprofits out, these are the folk who serve us and because of counseling and, uh, and things that they provide, not only that, but food and other things, we're gonna need them more than we ever have. And so the nonprofit is just as significant as a local business. Because these are the persons who deal with these folk who have real life issues. And granted, with where we are, the fear and all those things, uh, I would be derelict if I didn't raise that issue. But I want us to consider that, because, you know, we don't know, as, as I've said, there's a lot of ambiguity around this issue. And, you know, um, trying to control all that, you know, at some point, you know, people get desperate. They do desperate things and what have you. So you got to consider all factors. And so that's why, Mr. President, if we don't consider nonprofits, that's gonna be an issue for us. I just know the significance of that, because I deal with it. I have, as, in, in public housing, I deal with it, and most of the jobs I've had, because I've worked for nonprofits before. So we, you got to, you know, we got folks who go into, um, rehab and all these other places, what have you. You don't want to not have that service in place, and then folks start breaking in your car and your house and, you know, doing all sorts of things. You don't want that. We, this city cannot stand that. We already, um, you know, when it comes to crime, we, at the highest in, in Jefferson County, and if not in the state of Alabama. So just, just know that. And, and, you know, if I'm gonna get criticized, I'm gonna get criticized for being an advocate. I was an advocate long before I became a counselor. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Alright, um, I see Counselor Abbott. You need, you're good? I was gonna, I've got some comments and questions too, so you go first.
I do have a few questions.
Okay.
The Emergency Loan Fund, it says that it's to prevent staff reduction, offset losses, and help companies sponsor sick pay. Now, how are we going to confirm that the people who get these loans actually do that? Because on a national level, I know if you listen to the, to our representatives in Washington, you know, they have questions about whether loans given to big corporations will go just to give the CEO a big raise or whether they'll actually help the rank-and-file workers. So how are we going to be able to monitor or confirm, or how are people going to prove that they didn't lay their workers off? Because we aren't gonna know who their workers are unless they call us up and say, "This company laid me off and they got a loan from you." How, how, Dr. Carpenter, can you? Tell us how we'll know?
That's a good question, Counselor Abbott. The, each application requires someone to do, or an applicant to do a series of things, including outline their current payroll and their cash position. So one way is on the front end, we are going to try to reduce, just to be really candid about it. We want someone who doesn't have as much cash, or it doesn't appear that they'll make it, that they're just trying to pay off other debt. They will probably not be as great of a candidate for the line, right? So the idea is that we get enough information on the front end that we see some payroll stability so that they can keep moving forward. So that's one sort of safeguard. The second safeguard is in the application, we ask people to detail precisely how they will use the funding. And then the third component is that in the agreement executed between the, the loan document between the BBRC, who's actually executing the loan on our behalf and the company, they agree to these stipulations and on reporting requirements. So we will get reporting requirements from the, the BBRC. I personally believe that there's no, the vast majority of the businesses who are applying for this loan are trying to use it to bridge it into something else. for this loan are trying to use it to bridge it into something else. Maybe an SBA loan, maybe an opportunity to get their doors reopened. I don't think people are trying to misappropriate these funds, but I'm confident that the application itself and the rubric that we've implemented to score those applications provide enough safeguards for us to prevent people misusing or mishandling the funds.
Thank you. Well, I just think it's important for people, people in the public to, to realize that the city of Birmingham does not have limitless money. You know, we're not like the federal government, we can't print it. We don't have the Fed to come in and make some rule changes. So, you know, we've gotten some pretty unrealistic emails from people who think that we control everything, including all the utility companies and their landlords that may be expecting the rent to be paid. They, people have an unrealistic idea that because in Venezuela they can do that, we can do it here in Birmingham. And we don't own the utility companies, we don't, you know, and we don't have limitless funds. And let's face it, we have revenue projections that now we can wad them up and throw them in the trash can because our businesses have been shut down. So where are our revenues going to come from? So I think we just have to be realistic that we do not have a bottomless account of funds sitting there waiting to be used. And we don't want to use up enough of our money to where we have to lay off our own employees. That would be horrifying. And I don't, I think all of us would just sink below the floor here and not ever want to be seen again if we got to that point. So I just hope that people in the public, business owners and residents alike, are realistic to know that city, our city government is not going to be able to fix everything for people. That it's going to be a team effort between us and private industry and individuals who can afford to help. But the city just, we can't prop up every single business in Birmingham. And some of the emails I've gotten, I've just been either baffled that people have so little knowledge of how city government works, or just that they think that we're going to take their business on as a poster child, and that all the other businesses in Birmingham are just tough luck, I asked first. So let's just make sure that we're all being realistic in our thought processes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Couple of things, and we'll wrap it up, and we'll go ahead and move forward on this item. But a couple of things I want to make sure on our homework assignments, Mr. Mayor, that we have. One, we're going to work through, on the partnership summary, it does mention about the Loan Advisory Committee, and I think between now and in the morning, we can come back with a game plan on that. Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, hold, go ahead.
Well, I know Birmingham Strong, on the website, it says something about the homeless. What are we doing for them? If you don't have an answer, it's fine.
Related to this fund, nothing. There's, there's coordination right now with One Roof, the umbrella organization, that's engaging existing organizations in the community around how do we assist our homeless community and homeless population during the COVID-19. The first thing I'd like to start with is the existing shelters. And so they've all implemented the process, be in a position to assess those who actually come into their facilities. I think that's extremely important. Two, on the ground, as we related to sharing with families, as we related to sharing with anyone, this whole notion of some of the three things we just keep sharing, practice good common sense if you're sick, where you should be, social distancing, then the third being, be intentional about washing your hands and using hand sanitizers. What we've now done in public places is we've ordered it, and now we have to place it in public spaces, the ability for those who don't have access to an actual restroom or bathroom to wash their hands, that they have access to hand sanitizers at our public spaces. And there are additional other ways we've had them, but those are some of the top line of things.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Just a couple, I think, homework assignments that we're going to have. On that partnership summary, it mentions the Loan Advisory Committee. But I think if we could punt that till tomorrow, we'll come back with that being spelled out, a little bit more structure around that. Also, if we could just talk about next steps. Once this first phase, something in there that talks about, how do we move forward once the money is paid back? What's our plan in to continue to support small businesses over the next eighteen to twenty-four months? Just kind of spell that out a little bit. Also, a little bit more about the strategy around, I know a lot of people have signed up online, but is, are there things that we can do as a city to help reach out to some of the small businesses who are maybe not aware of the program? And they understand the deadline? And I think maybe one or two things, but those are just kind of the things we could just tweak between now, tomorrow, when we come back with the, the meeting tomorrow for us to consider the million-dollar appropriation. And also the Rubics you said that you sent out last night. I don't know what that one. Oh, okay.
Mr. President, I apologize. You, I realize I rechecked my messages this morning.
Okay, all right.
Everyone else's message went through except yours.
Okay, all right.
There is a conspiracy against you.
Okay, no, that's fine. If you could just make sure, and you make sure that Administrator Kidd and Deputy McDaniels gets it. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I want to finish, but go ahead, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, 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 I was just trying, I was making notes on the metric. So those are, I think, kind of the bullet points that we picked up on in our conversations, on things that we'll report back tomorrow. And the, I guess the item tomorrow will be similar just like this, Mr. Mayor? Or will it be, it'll just be an appropriation tomorrow, or will it be?
It'll just be an appropriation tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, hold on, Mr. President, let legal speak to that.
Okay.
It will not be an appropriation. The funds were appropriated last week.
It's going to be an agreement.
It'll just be an amendment to the agreement you have today.
Okay, so we can work through, we can, tomorrow, the modifications like the number of board members we can, on the budget, we can, we'll tweak that. Is that amenable?
We should, we should talk, because we need to make sure there's an agreement and what's being presented to this body to vote on.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I'm just asking Attorney Smiley, is that, because I know, just trying to make sure, yeah, when it comes back, we will have had conversations before tomorrow, and we'll just come back with the, with something that I think is amenable to everybody. Yeah, I was just trying to get clarity from the Law Department, that's all, on what can go and what can't, that's all. All right.
May I make one additional point to you? Because of the governor's order, tomorrow, if you're only considering the item related to COVID-19, you're not required as the council body to be here physically.
We're very aware of that, okay, thank you. I think there's going to be another item that we're probably going to consider tomorrow that we're going to discuss in just a few, but we're aware of that, dealing with virtual meetings. And so there was some training we were supposed to have yesterday, but it, we had to postpone that, so we'll work through the training so that in subsequent meetings, as we move, as we move forward, that might be an option. But we would definitely need to get the training, and we didn't get it yesterday for, yeah, some things came up, so we didn't get the train, the training, proper training.
One, one last statement that we need to consider in this whole process. I think Counselor Abbott is right. You know, we're not going to be able to do this, but, you know, in perpetuity or so. But it would be important, Mr. President, if we had an economist or somebody professionally who can give us some advice on what we ought to be doing as a city in these, in these times. Because what you don't want to do is obligate ourselves to a fault and not understand the real dynamics of economics. You know, I'm not an economist, and I dare say that we are treading on what you call stagflation, as I learn these terms, that I've been, that means that you, you hear, you know, you might be breathbroken.
That's a new one there.
Yes, stagflation.
Okay.
Yeah, inflation, right. It's an economic term, but it means that you're striding the water, quite frankly.
A word of the day.
Yeah, so, but anyway, but just.
So that's the word of the day.
So let's, let's, because we need to know that, and we need a professional opinion. We don't need a third party, we don't need, we need a professional opinion about that. And we got some economists that.
Didn't Dr. Carpenter one?
Who was that?
Okay, all right, let's move.
Mr. President.
Okay, all righty. All righty, do we have any other question? Counselor Woods?
I think you know the demo. I think we need financial advisement.
I got it.
From somebody who does this every day as a living.
Okay, I have that. We can call on Counselor Woods now. Counselor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I did want to say, kind of, I guess to the concern of creating ongoing inflation, I think what we're doing with this million dollars is, is not really looking, we're not trying to stimulate the economy, we're trying to help businesses survive where we can. We can't really solve every single problem, but if you can get people funding in a short term, where some of the larger government funding will come down, it's just going to take a lot longer. Because overall, if we lose our small business community, I think they did a good job in the last couple of weeks, really laying that out, how dependent we are here in the city on small businesses. And so we need to definitely step up and do what we can to make sure that they survive. And like I said, we're, we're headed for a pretty significant economic hit. And so all of them, you know, we can't protect, step in on every situation, but if we can help some of the businesses bridge that gap, get over that gap, and then also on the other side, hopefully, you know, we start getting what we need to do to flatten that curve to limit, you know, how long we are in this situation. And so I did get a chance to speak with Mr. Dickerson yesterday. Appreciate him taking some time there, kind of talking through the rubric and some of what his plans were. My biggest concern was really making sure that, to your point, the money got to where it was supposed to go and got used for what it was supposed to be used for. And I think that we have some good things in place to do that, and I'm optimistic. But I think that it might be a little premature to start worrying about stagflation.
Okay, all righty.
An economist?
Economics undergrad, did study economics at the University of Tennessee-Chattanooga. Not a, don't do it every day, but do know a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, all right. You ready to speak to the item, not give us another? Speak to the item, because I think we're about ready to vote on this item.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. I did want to say that I do remember the elasticity in the demand slope in economics, you know, I'm not an economist.
All right.
I do remember that.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so we are ready to vote on item forty-seven, Mr. Clark?
So we're voting on?
We're voting on item forty.
As is?
As is, understanding that tomorrow, with the million-dollar appropriation, I'm kind of outlining those areas, that we will be bringing back some additional information and structure around.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that item passes. Think, is that all the items? Mr. Clark?
I think so.
Okay, all right, what are we going to do, Mr. Mayor? We're going to have a.
I'm sorry, you had two items that were passed out by Mr.
Yeah, we're going to, we'll, we'll get to that in a minute. What we're going to do is, this is conversation only, Mr. Mayor? Is that? I thought we were going to. Yeah, but I thought. All right. Here's what we have, several, no, this is discussion only, I think, and we'll, we'll take it up in the morning. I think that's where, instead of getting the, the information now, so.
Thanks, sir.
So what is this?
I mean, here's where we are, here's where we are from draft ordinance is dealing with shelter in place. We can have a discussion now with the understanding, I want to get consensus, that we have this on the agenda for tomorrow. We can ask, we talked about it here, if there's some additional questions, we can ask Counsel Williams to call a special call meeting. I don't know, we can, we can check with the clerk and, and call one for later this afternoon and hash out other matters regarding this, and then have it for us in the morning.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Want me to speak to? There, there is a note that I would like to make, due to our, as Counselor Hoyt said, our fiduciary duty of public safety, one. And then, two, a technical issue that I think the clerk needs to bring to this body's attention that may make, make us look at this a little differently.
Three point one five outlines that items of permanent operation, I think this would qualify as one. You can't entertain a special meeting, you have to have, take place during a regular meeting of council.
Well, okay, well, why don't we do this? If we, here's the deal, why don't we take, hold on, hold on, hold on. So why don't we, if we, okay, if we, if we do say this is an addendum item, and then we'll recess this meeting to eight-thirty in the morning, and we can discuss this matter before the special call at nine-thirty.
The problem that you're having with that situation is you had the seven-seventy-two advertised as a separate meeting to take place.
Okay, here's, here's what we'll do. We're going to do like we did last week. We're going to talk about, we're going to recess, we'll come back later on this evening. All right, that's how we're going to roll with this. Only because we need to, we can talk through it, but we need to have time to discuss it and not, and not, yeah, so, so let's do like we did last week. We'll receive the information, we'll recess, take a long lunch, and come back later on this evening and, and work through it. So just, so we can, we can stay on top, this is urgent, but just so that everybody, we can work through things, so, is that?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, there's a short difference between last week and this week. One is we're providing you in written, written information first. Second thing is, what I'm going to attempt to do, I understand what you want to do, if you'll allow me to briefly explain this.
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
Can the staff give me a copy of that, please?
Oh, you didn't get a copy of it?
Here, here it is.
It's two?
Here it is. So, Mr. President and the council, I stated, many of you all know this, but I think it's worth publicly stating, if, if, if the mayor and the council didn't do anything, our top two priorities in this city is public safety and public infrastructure. What we're now witnessing as it relates to the COVID-19, it's increasing cases within this region and area, is not only a health crisis, but a public safety issue as well. And there's some additional information I needed to add. The numbers I shared with you earlier about what's currently taking place at UAB, those numbers are old. And the time between sharing what I shared this morning and talking to you now, I've had a chance to talk to the leadership at UAB. So remember, that's only one, what I'm about to share with you is, is only at one hospital within our city limits. This doesn't include Princeton, this doesn't include St. Vincent, South or St. Vincent, East or any other medical facility where people can come in as beds and patients. Currently, right now as we speak, there are forty-five cases of the COVID-19 where people have been hospitalized currently at UAB. Eighty-one are under observation, eighteen people are under a ventilator. We are now at a situation where if we do not act as a mayor and councilman, as leaders, this will not only spread, we could possibly see a run on our hospitals. We need to do everything we can to prevent the following. One is the increase in spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus. Two, an actual run on our hospitals, with the ultimate number-one goal being this. We need to do everything within our power to save lives. This ordinance before you allows us to move away from eleven days ago, only having identified our first case. only having identified our first case, till today in one hospital, having over forty-five people hospitalized. We must act now. This allows us to go from recommendations to enforcement. And so, Mr. President, if you will, briefly allow me to share some important contents within this document. Many of you all received the first draft this morning. What you see before you is two things. You see, um, an increase in my, um, proclamation as it relates to the city-state of an emergency that gives me more enforcement power. But I am now asking you to assist in that enforcement power based on the conversations I've had with Counsel Hillier, based on the conversation I have with Counsel Hunter Williams, who is Chairman of Public Safety, and many of, of you individually around, um, an ordinance to establish a shelter in place order. What you see is the original document, that's redlined that you received this morning. The additional one you see is the updated version after talking with several of you all with some of the issues you had. And we've been able to include that additional language. I would like for you all to turn to the second page, um, where we can just go into the meat. And then, Mr. President, I'll yield the floor to you and your body. Section one speaks to, um, now therefore it be ordained by the council of the city of Birmingham that a shelter in place order will establish. It's hereby imposed of the city of Birmingham effective today, March twenty-fourth, and will be in effect until April third, unless it is determined that the emergency conditions no longer exist prior to that date, but may be extended if the duration of the emergency conditions continue beyond that date. I think it's important to note, um, who this applies to, with the exceptions. I think it's also important to note, uh, that this does not contradict in any way, um, Jefferson County Health Department's order. As a matter of fact, it gives it more teeth. Um, the additional teeth includes making sure people are in compliance. What we find out here is that, um, a lot of people are not in compliance. A lot of people are treating this as a vacation. This is not a vacation. Um, this is a moment in our city's history, as well as the state's history and America's history, where we have to not only take this seriously, but take preventive measures. One of the preventive measures, we believe, is if you're not deemed essential via your place of business or as a, as a person who lives in this city that has to go out here and work for something that's been deemed essential or you yourself have to pick up something essential, we need you to sh, shelter in place. We believe this ordinance, um, based on overwhelming amount of research, uh, within other cities, other states, uh, that continually act around us. We don't have the luxury to wait and this is a moment, um, that we all need to look in the mirror and know that this is the right thing to do. Many exceptions are in here related around essentials. Shelter in place still means that as a resident of this city, that you can go to a grocery store, a convenience store, a corner store, a gas station, a dollar store, Walmart, or any form of anybody that sells food, uh, that sells gas, anything of that nature, that essential businesses are still open and that people can still go to those places. Here are two examples we're trying to prevent. Any gathering, because gatherings aren't working. Two, we don't need people in our public spaces, uh, whether young or older, playing basketball, making contact with each other and then taking it back, again, as I said, to their, their house, coming in contact with their mother or big mom. We don't need anything of that nature. And again, we need to move away from recommendations that we've been recommending, recommending, recommending for the last eleven days. We now need to move to enforcement to be sure we're in a position to save lives and flatten this curve. There are many more things I want to say, uh, but in the interest of time, again, in the documents, it is overly detailed and we're happy to share this, um, publicly as well, that who this applies to, how it's applied, what's defined as essential activities. Again, this does not limit, this does not limit or eliminate or prohibit all outdoor activities. So for those who want to do solitary activities, such as running, such as walking, such as biking, such as hiking, those things will still be permitted. But we believe, um, if need to and if necessary, visibly seeing activity out here that's against this order, we will move to enforce of disperse, dis, dispersing, uh, those people.
All right, you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir.
Ms. Bernard, Attorney Bernard, mentioned that this does have an expiration attached to it, so it does not qualify as permanent due to the expiration part, so it can be taken up tomorrow due to that standpoint.
Okay, um, okay, here's what we would do. Let's kind of, just kind of get a timeline. We can ask, um, that we have a, well, who has a meeting today? We can tag this. We can have a committee meeting today or a special, we can have a committee meeting, a special call. Is that, um, because of the nature of an emergency meeting, have a work session later on today and take it up in the morning? Or we can have a work session later, uh, we can have a committee, a special committee of the whole, discuss this matter and reconvene the council meeting till five o'clock, six o'clock today. And in between that time, we can have, uh, we can have a, you know, we can have a committee meeting to discuss this. Or we can have a committee meeting this afternoon and then take it up in the morning. So, and I think as it gives, gives a little bit more time, so, um, so that, that's the, the two choices. I would ask that we have a special call committee meeting for the nature of the emergency. I was trying to, well, I'm trying to get some clarity. Hold on, let's just, let's just get clarity first and then we can figure out a timeline on this.
Ms. King, or, this is a question about the clarity item.
I know, but we're asking about all of it.
If we have five people at an emergency, uh, public safety meeting, if we have five members and there's a quorum at a public safety meeting, could this pass?
No.
So you have to have a notice requirement, sort of a twenty-four hour notice. So you could do what you originally suggested. President Parker, you could do what you originally suggested was to have a meeting at eight-thirty in the morning and then have a special call after that, which is our regularly scheduled nine-thirty meeting, I believe.
President Parker, can we re, can we do one of your other ideas of recess and, and vote on this today? I think because of the situation unfolding as fast as it is, I think it could be prudent.
We just wanted to talk through options since, since, since the clerk came back with that, we're talking through options. So here's what we're going to do. We go to recess till five o'clock, um, and, um, is that good for everybody?
Absolutely. Time is of essence.
Four-thirty, five, I mean, give us.
Four-thirty would be good, five, the earlier the better. I want to save lives, so sooner the better.
Also, I mean, we need to make sure that it's communicated out. So you want to do four-thirty? Four o'clock, okay. We're going to recess to four o'clock.
Can we do one-fifteen?
We'll recess to four o'clock. That's the motion.
All in favor, let it be known by saying that.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, recess to four.
President, pardon.
Yeah, I know, we're, we're just, yeah, we're going to go into our E-nine-one-one. I just wanted to. We, we recess.
Thank you, thank you.
Recess, yeah. I was trying to cut your microphone off.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, thank you, yeah.